Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call the City Council meeting to order. Please stand with me to see the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we'll start with roll call. Online, we'll begin online. Councilman Henderson.
I'm here.
Councilman Loy.
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Cox.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
Great, thank you. Good to see everyone here. Approval of the agenda. I am looking for an approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second. Second.
Okay, thank you. So, we had a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Looking for the motion to approve the consent agenda. This is items one through six.
Madam Mayor, I would like to pull item four from the consent agenda. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? If not, do I have a motion for items one, two, three, five, six?
I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Cox, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, to approve items one, two, three, and five and six on the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Moving on to, or moving back to item number four. Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes?
Yeah, I appreciate that. So, I was just looking over this. This is the Second Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Budget. So, the first one, we increased by $30,000, and that was on a $330,000, so just shy of 10% increase. Now, we're looking at a $50,000 increase on a $350,000, and so, we're looking at toward 15%-ish. But, I mean, in overall, if we're looking at an $80,000 increase on this budget, we're looking at a 25% increase so far, and it's not done. So, I'm just curious to get a little bit more understanding where the original estimate came from, and then figure out, like, how many more amendments we're possibly looking at doing, and what's it going to cost to wrap this up?
Yeah, I'll start with the end, if that's okay. We don't anticipate any more amendments. Part of this amendment is doing the critical areas ordinance update, which is required after our comprehensive plan is approved. So, we've added that piece into the scope of work. So, that's part of the increase. $30,000 of the $50,000 is covered by grant funding, so a big chunk of this is still grant-supported. And there have been a few changes in scope. I can't go too deep on that. The Facet folks, I believe Donna's online, could provide a little bit more detail on that, and Nicole may be able to provide a little bit more detail on that as well. But, we, as we've gone through this process, it just is, you know, sometimes takes a little bit longer. We add some additional public workshops and things like that, and so, there's a little bit of additional cost. But, we don't anticipate anything further than this.
Yeah, 25% is a bit more than just a little additional cost on an estimate, just like if you were to take your car to a mechanic. So, just caution of that, seeing any more increases. I know we've spent a lot on the climate element. We got $500,000 for that, I believe, right? We've only actually spent 250. We've put money towards other areas of that, but that's something also I would just, again, like to, you know, approach the council on figuring out a way to combat that, because it's $500,000 to basically tell us 10 things. Drive less, get electric vehicles, you know, make electric buildings, and use stuff like that. So, pretty standard for all the communities that'll get that. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be doing any more where that other 25% came from, and then get a little bit more detail on it. Thanks, Charlie.
Did you want to make a motion to approve item number four on the consent agenda?
I'll make it.
Yeah, I guess.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Loy. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Loy, seconded by Councilman Cox, to approve item number four on the consent agenda. It's the 2024 PS-06 Amendment to Facet Northwest Comprehensive Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you. Moving on to City Administrator Report, and Charlie, I think you're going to do a presentation for us, are you not, for the Community Development Grant Program? The final report?
Yes, I have a short presentation, and Director Bullock's got a quick update that's going to precede that, so we don't forget to give it to you.
Yes, thanks, Charlie. So, real quickly, we are well into our construction of Overworth Olmsted Park and the SR9 Roundabout. And just an invitation to any council members, if they'd like to go on a tour of the construction so far. It's kind of a good time to do it, because we have everything torn up, and it looks significant. But, then taking another tour when we're nearly done, you can kind of see what it took to get it now, and then you can then turn around and see what progress is made when you're like 90% complete. And then, of course, after it's complete, everybody can use it, and they can actually see it. But, it's just kind of an interesting thing. If there's any council members interested in do that, my staff would be happy to take you around for tours of the sites. And you might ride in the backhoe if you're really nice to the contractor.
Okay, thank you. Mr.?
Okay. And Thomas, if you can pull that PowerPoint up.
Good.
So, this is just a quick summary of our Community Development Grant Program, which closed out on June 30th. And Thomas, if you can just click through the slides here, I'll just go to next slide. Thank you. You all know the program overview. We had $140,000 allocated by the council, $5,000 max for nonprofits, $10,000 for businesses. I'm not going to read the whole slide, but you roughly know when it happened. Go ahead and move on, Thomas. And goals, again, beautifying the city, engaging the community, and economic and social investment. Next slide. So, this is really where I wanted to focus, is we have these before and after pictures. We sent our, one of our summer interns out to help us get some of these. They're not all perfect, same angle exactly. Another museum picture, the museum looks great, but it's not actually the grant project that it shows. It just looks really nice. So, in some cases, like Chaffner, it's dead-on, because they did a lot of landscaping and things on the outside. So, you can see the work there. Next slide. Happiest tees on earth looks truly impressive as a result of the work that we helped to fund. Next slide. Double Barrel Barbecue did some work in the parking lot, kind of hard to photograph, and some lighting work, also kind of hard to photograph in the sunlight, but another grant recipient. Next slide. The museum, as I mentioned. Museum looks great. Lots of good effort going on there. The grant program itself focused on the bunkhouse and some of the painting, I believe, on the north side of the building, as well as some landscaping. So, not exactly all areas that we could easily photograph, but it is looking good. Next slide. Tight Lies, some work on the frontage and some painting. Next slide. Trinky Bisu did some fencing work on the side of the building, so you can see that fence on the left side between the tree and the building to help block off some of the work they have going on out there that can be a little hard to look at when it's in progress. Next slide. Almac. This is just one portion of their project that we were able to photograph, but aesthetic improvements all around you're going to see on these projects. Next slide. Old Mill, I think we just have an after picture in the case of the steam donkey, that before probably be pretty unsightly, is my guess, but that is the after picture of the work that was done to shore it up and make it authentic. Next slide. Low Auto Sales, really impressive exterior work on the building, and I believe some window work there as well. Next slide. Pulis Promenade, next to the Chamber of Commerce, so work with the umbrellas there, as well as additional landscaping. Next slide. Bonnie Joe's, back of the building, really transformed as well. Next slide. Boys and Girls Club did some painting on the exterior, and so, you can see the results of that as well, and some landscaping. And, next slide. Thank you, you're good. Signage at Cascade Learning, exterior signage, so you can see it circled at the top there, and then any signage shown at the bottom. Next slide. That was a small one. Cedar Woolly Flowers, awning work, so the before is below, the after is above. And I know we've talked extensively about the paint on that building, and we'll continue to work on that. Next slide. Cedar Woolly Youth Football and Cheer did some painting work, as well as some signage work, and another nicely transformative project. Next slide. Cascade Fabrics, awning work, and awning is much better than the one in the upper left, if you look at it closely. Next slide. So, this is overview of the program. We spent $124,660 of the $140,000. Seventeen businesses were supported. We had 18 grants authorized. We had one project that did not get completed in time. Want to give a lot of credit to Kelly for all of her work in helping people get invoices in, turn in all the things they needed to turn in in order to get reimbursed by the city, and to do that in time. And there was a lot of direct outreach, personal outreach, involved in that. So, thank you, Kelly, for your work on that. And thank you, council, for authorizing these. The goal, right, is to get some revitalization going, and to get other folks to then do similar investments on their own, or to go beyond what you have funded, and they've done that in many cases. So, a lot of comments on how the town's looking. So, those are the ones we were able to photograph. One that comes to mind that we didn't capture was Lager Rodeo. I don't know how that didn't make our slideshow, but I didn't catch that until just now, but I was just thinking about the wood carvings downtown, and those also look amazingly better than they did before. So, happy to take any questions, but what we want to do, and I'll add that slide to this presentation before we post it, is put this on the website with the grant program, so anybody who has an interest in what we did can go and look at that and see the results.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, if you do need some before and afters for the side project, for the Cedar Woolly Museum, I'll have those available. And thank you to Councilmember Lavaca, because he fought for the nonprofits to be able to do that, and they're bringing in tax revenue, so that was really great to see. And then, with the leftover funding, where are we at with that, and what we had talked about possibly for making a same sort of program, potentially for sidewalks, where people could apply as well in some of the really bad areas? Did we, whatever came of that, and could we have that discussion on the leftover money?
I don't know how far we go. Bill, I'm kind of looking your way on sidewalk replacement, sidewalk rehab.
You actually have replaced some sidewalks, but not necessarily with cement. What you have done is just ground it down and...
Yeah, so, I mean, it's really a combination. I mean, the biggest sidewalk replacement refurbishment thing was done last year, because we just had the right mix of grants when we did the 46 ADA ramps and some of the, I'll call ADA gaps, because some of that was actually lengths of sidewalk we replaced as well. And, yeah, really, a lot of that is building a list and sorting out what those priorities that make it on that list, lots of them from customer comments, citizen comments, and also just what our crews find and say, you know, this is something that's low-hanging fruit we should take care of, and so, that's how we incorporate a lot of those things, so.
Bill, could you also address the work that's being done? I have received a lot of comments on the fact that doesn't appear township is done yet, and now we're working on state.
Right.
And so, maybe you can kind of fill in the gaps, just exactly what's happening, why it's happening, and when it should be completed?
Yeah, so, what we're doing right now mainly is the grinding operation first, and kind of efficient use of the grinder, just because they're scheduled all over the state. I mean, all, it, getting different grinding companies, you know, once you got their schedule, you really kind of don't deviate from that, because you may not get them back for weeks. And so, basically, what's happening right now is we're grinding that portion of the pavement that has to reconnect to the curb, so we need to grind that down. And so, what's going to happen is, we have, our roads are flat enough that we really want to increase the crown of the road, so that's why we're only grinding that last eight feet everywhere you see it. And then, as we pave into it, that will be the edge of a pavement, will have a clean edge along the curb and gutter, but then it will get thicker as you get towards the crown, and that one adds strength to the road, makes it drain better, and it also minimizes your grinding expense, which actually is one of your larger expenses when you're doing a rehab project on a road. So, we're trying to be efficient with that, and right now, it's mainly a matter of getting the grinder done with all of the grinding needed to do, then they can go do things in other jurisdictions, and that gives us a better ability to schedule paving when we need it.
So, kind of coming back around to the question, we have more money for economic development that we'd also set aside. Council may recall, we originally had $300,000 set aside, and we put $140,000 into the grant program. We did some work on downtown on MedCaf Streetlights as well, and so, there's some money left in this $140,000, but there's also some additional money in the budget. Intention there, I think, has been to try to do some of the projects that are in the Economic Development Action Strategy, Action Plan that the council approved, because we've got a number of infrastructure-related things there, but that's where we are, and we don't have anything directly programmed at this point. So, sidewalks could be, you know, a discussion, and we continue to work on that, and we need to have more discussion with council on that as well, in terms of coming up with our, kind of our final strategy on sidewalk rehab.
All right, thank you, Charlie.
Just one more thing.
Yeah.
One reason why we try to be what I call strategic about sidewalks is, what most people don't know, is that sidewalks cost just about as much to replace per linio foot as the street. So, you got a five-foot sidewalk and a 36-foot wide street, that cost comparison, they're expensive, so we try really hard to do it the most with the money we have, but it really takes some thought. So, sometimes we just repair the sidewalk rather than just replace it, but that is one of the bigger considerations we have to look at.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Councilman Loy. Do you have a report tonight?
Yeah, I got a couple of quick things. We're getting ready for our eighth or ninth skateboard challenge, and this year, we're adding an ice cream truck. Did we get the pizza truck?
Not confirmed yet, verbally confirmed. Yeah, but not, we don't have it in writing yet.
But anyhow, it's kind of getting a little bit bigger every year, and I was hoping maybe we could ask people to start thinking about it, and think what else we can add to it to make it, you know, a little bit bigger every year, and make it a little bit more. But, you know, we start adding some vendor trucks and add this and that, it could turn into a much larger operation, so if anybody comes up with some ideas, make sure you bring them up. And then, I got a phone call from Connie wanting to let everybody know that they've got a group called, what the heck is it called? I don't know. And it was Guards of Skagit, you know, for the electric, electric thing out here, for the saving the electricity. And they're going to have a gathering tomorrow, and they even got a lawyer, they got money somehow, but they're going to have a gathering tomorrow at, tomorrow night at Fredonia Grange at 6:00. Anybody wants to go in and sit in on it and see what's going on. So, if I get a chance, I'm going to go, so that's my two subjects.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. Just two things tonight. The Cedar Woolly Museum would like to invite all of you to the Skagit Steel unveiling, the new exhibit. It's going to be Sunday, 11 to 3:00, and I just wanted to thank you for adding the temporary signal to Highway 20 and Reed. I've expressed concern, and so, I was really glad to see that that was taken care of, so thank you very much, and everyone in my ward will thank you very much, too.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Good evening. Just a couple of concerns that I had from some community members. One is one that I've brought up in the past, and that's the concerns about the high-density housing in the area, and how that reflects itself into the infrastructure, as well as the schools. So, I continue to get that. I also have received several comments about the congestion on Highway 20 and Cook Road. We do know that that is an issue, and this time of year with people going up and over the pass as well, that adds to it. So, people are coming in and going through our town to get up and over, and that is adding to some of our congestion in the middle of the road construction and stuff as well, so passing along some of that. The other thing that I continue to get is several requests for the bridge and walkway to be restored between the Janicu Playfields and Snaddle over there, simply because it's been put in place, put back, back and forth several different times, and some of the community is thinking that that, putting that back would be really great for the families to be able to walk back and forth, so that the ball fields, they can just take the little path and go away, over to grab McDonald's, or go over to grab, to backspins to kill some time between games and that sorts of things. So, not having to relocate their vehicles, drive around, or their families having to walk all the way around the sidewalks and around the block. So, just a couple of requests for that, because it's brought up to me several times since I've been out there, and that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go up to Councilman Henderson. Do you have a report tonight, Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Mary Johnson. Good evening, everyone. I have two things on my list. The first was the township road overlay. It's nice to see that a lot of the sidewalk, or the curb and gutters are getting repaired, so that's a really good thing to see. The other thing that I had was, after our last meeting, it came to my attention that there were certain organizations that are looking to apply for the 1590 brick and mortar funding, yet our RFP session had closed. So, I spoke with Charlie about this, and he suggested that if we wanted to reopen it, we should reopen it until the 31st of August. So, with that being said, I, in order to have these other organizations apply, I would make a motion to extend our 1590 funding RFP for the brick and mortar to the 31st of August of 2025.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilman Lavaca, to reopen the 1590 RFP with closing date being 8/31. Any discussion?
Just curious if the organizations gave a reason they didn't make the deadline?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
Councilman Burns?
Yes, Councilman Henderson.
Okay. Yes, so, those organizations reached out to me, and they were curious about it, because they had heard a few things about it during our last meeting, and they weren't aware that it was, that it, that the, and I also wasn't aware that the RFP session had actually closed back in June. So, I told them I would follow up with Charlie on that, and this was his suggestion to, if we wanted to reopen it.
I see. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. We'll get that going.
Thank you.
Yes, is that it? Before I move on?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Yep.
That's all for me.
All right, good, very good, thank you. Councilman Cox?
Yes, I attended the 40th Anniversary Celebration of the Cedar Woolly Seed Year Center, and I just thought it was a wonderful celebration. They had a great musician there. I learned a lot. I mean, it's, every time I go into the grocery store, food prices seem to go up, and that was just two days ago, and I learned, you know, the county runs this, but with our, you know, through the senior center, Meals on Wheels, they have a congregate dining program, so they're providing important resources to seniors, and I think that's fabulous. So, you know, kudos to them. I saw in Skagit Valley Herald today that there's a concert at Northern State and also the History Day, so that, there's some really cool, they said it was the inaugural concert, which is really cool up there, so they're making, finding good uses for Northern State. Let's see if there's anything else. Nope, that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Oh, I would like to take a tour of the Roundabout, Bill, so I'll reach out.
Councilman Burns?
I have two constituent concerns, interests. One of them was speeding on railroad, and the other one suggested that they would love to see officers out walking around, riding bicycle, interacting with people around their neighborhoods to get to know them a little bit better. I thought that did sound like a nice idea, if we have the staffing for it. And something that crossed my mind as we were approving the consent agenda, the temporary signal, we're purchasing that, correct?
No, that's not a purchase, that's a rental.
Okay. Expensive rental.
Which is, yeah, we're doing it in-house, as far as organizing the permits with Washdott, the rental and the installation, and actually, the company that you rent it from does the installation typically, because contracting it out would add another 50% to that number, so.
I was going to make a suggestion.
And it also kind of gives us control over it, too, comparatively, so.
Thank you. I was going to make a suggestion for July 4th, but I will not then. Thank you.
All right, all right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things came up. One thing I wanted to mention about the skate park competition, you mentioned having ideas. One of the ideas that we talked about was having a sponsorship go on. This year, it's a little late for that, but I think it'd be awesome next year if businesses wanted to participate, to be able to sponsor 10, 15, 50 bucks, whichever, and then get their name on that flyer, as well as advertised at the event. So, we'll work toward that. I think that would be great if everybody agreed to that. Another thing that kind of came up was yard waste. I did contact Bill. Our neighborhood's been doing a lot of trimming. I did a lot of trimming in my yard, and we were just getting inconsistencies down at the station, so get a porster board down there, something that's consistent, and then advertise it a bit better, so that way our neighborhoods know that we do want them to trim up their trees, and if we can make it, you know, as cost-effective as possible, that would be great. I know that we're not aiming to make a profit of it, but it'd be interesting to see what that cash intake is, what it takes to dump that dumpster, it just goes to mulching, the mulchings are full-sold, what we use for our normal yard waste pickups throughout the city. It's like so much every month, and you get so much time, so just kind of see where we're at there, and if we can actually save a little bit down at the yard waste center for people to trim up their houses, their gardens, and their trees. One thing that's been coming up, and I know it's a sensitive topic, is the community center event that happened, and it was, it was a tragedy, but it's, there hasn't been a lot of knowledge based on that, so from what I understand, there's not a clarity on if it was gang-related, which gang, if it wasn't, was the guns illegally purchased, what happened in that event? And it was a very serious event that affected our community, but it just seemed to quickly be out of the spotlight. I think even having a moment of silence for those guys, having some consideration for what happened, and then getting more transparency on what the actual case is. I've seen, I know that's under current investigation, but we've seen many a times where there would be reports, so-and-so was arrested and charged with such and such, before any charges were, or before any investigation, before any trial was set, it's just these people were arrested in this and this. So, there are cases where certain information is disclosed, if it's available for the community, so, and that's what I got. Thank you.
Chief, I don't know if you want to comment on it. I know it's an open investigation, and there really isn't a whole lot to share at this point.
You got it right there. We're still trying to figure out everything that happened.
Huge thanks, though, to you and your staff. I know that that was very taxing. Also, the fire department was very much involved, EMS. Again, just really want to stress that we are very grateful that you're well-trained, you're professional, and that you were able to handle this in a very professional manner. So, yeah, thank you. Anything else, Councilman?
If we can get information as soon as possible, when allowed. I know that information does get released to the public in certain cases. If it was gang-related, which gang was in Cedar Woolly and did it, right? I mean, I think people would be, there, people that I've talked to are concerned. Obviously, there was a shooting right downtown in the community center at a teenage birthday party, and so, to find out how that happened, are they from our community, do we have a problem in our community, those really should get addressed at some point. I know investigations can go on for a long time, nine months, a year and a half, two years, then the investigation, or information comes out. And I have seen stories that are like so-and-so has been charged with such-and-such even on Facebook. So if we can get that, that'd be awesome, that's all.
All right. Thank you. So just a couple of things. I extend my thanks to the council again for the community grant that just really has helped downtown pop and was a wonderful project. And I want to thank the council for putting that into place and supporting it and extending it for those who are having difficulty getting the supplies that they needed and other issues that arose, keeping them from being able to complete the project. But they had every intention to do so. So thank you for doing that. Also wanted to make you aware that we are going to be involved in HR interviews next week. Very excited about that. More to come regarding that. Wanted to talk about the special event discussion. I know that that's something that we have said that we are going to do in the fall of the year and we are. We have it scheduled for September 3rd. It's going to happen during the work session, so keep that in mind. Also, wanted to mention the port, the summer concert that they're having at the Swift Center. It is the first time that they've ever done this. During the day, they will have tours and stories about Northern State slash the Swift Center. So encourage the public to partake in that. And I want to say, Bill, so very excited. I mean, I, we did drive up to take a look at the park, Olmsted Park. And yeah, you wouldn't even know it's a park right now. It's really crazy. So it's, it is exciting. It's going to be exciting to see how it does develop. So thank you very much and thank you for offering those tours. Yeah, okay. And then one last thing, but you already mentioned it, Councilman Cock, and that was the 40th anniversary of the senior center. That is just a beautiful, beautiful partnership between the city and the county. And it's 40 years that we've been doing that. And 40 years we've been providing for our community. And I think that is, I think that's wonderful. So thank you for the community support that continues with that. All right, moving on then to public comment. It is 6:31. I don't know if we have, do we have somebody signed up? Oh, thank you, Kelly. So we have a couple of people. It is 6:31. I'm going to open public comment. We request that you give your name, how you're affiliated with Cedro Woolley, and try to keep it to three minutes. First person up is Chester Allhouse. Hi, Chester. Actually, Kyle, could you help with the mic, make sure it's on and?
Testing.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you. You guys just talking about Northern State? I've been in every building up there, the tunnels up there. That used to be a fallout center for this town years ago.
Hmm, that's interesting.
There's a morgue up there. I don't know, nobody really knows about it up there. There's a morgue up there. I've been in every building up there.
Okay.
I used to go up there. I used to work out there back in the late 70s. Seventy-eight, seventy-nine, when they had the YACC up there. Basically a form of national parks and the Forest Service and I worked for them. And it's a good place to take kids up to, but let them know there's a morgue, there's a morgue up there and it's still there. And, but it's a good place to check out. There used to be a baseball field up there, whole nine yards. There's a, there's a pond there. They used, they used to have kids go up there and fish in it all the time. I don't know if they still do it or not.
We do. First weekend in May, I believe they do that.
So, but yeah, I've been up there. They used to have a dairy farm on the back side of, across the creek there where they purchased their own food for that, that place. They grew it themselves, milked the cows, whole nine yards, and their meat came out. They had their own, that place should have never been closed. They, they were self-sufficient up there, doing everything themselves up there. And they got a power plant up there. Through all their power, heat, whole nine yards, that whole, all those buildings had their own power plant up there. Why they closed it, I have no idea. They shitting them. And, because I've been in this town for 64 years. There ain't nothing about this town I don't know about. You know, so, but the reason I, I came in here tonight, I already talked to the young gentleman over here, we got, got things drained out.
Okay.
But I got, I got a question. I know you guys got all the things on here, but what I'm thinking about, there's kids riding a bicycle on Highway 20 down the side of the shoulder. Even me, when I go to my doctor's office out here, I got to go on the side of the road. But I go towards the traffic so I can watch the idiots coming at me. Because I've had one come, basically come right at me. Why can't you do it like Burlington does over there? Have a path between the tracks and the Highway 20, all the way up, up to here. It stops at District Line Road. There's no reason why this so-called county, and you guys get together and build a, a road, a trail on the side between the tracks and there, so kids can get off that highway. With all the traffic that's out there, somebody's going to get hurt and somebody's going to get killed.
So I, we normally don't respond. That's usually not what public comment is about. But actually, Mr. Bullock, Bill Bullock, he's our Public Works Director. He could probably give you an answer regarding that.
I mean, I mean, the county needs, I mean, Burlington, they don't know how much they did where the county helped out, but they need to do something. So those kids on bicycles get off that Highway 20. The traffic's getting bad out there and nobody, nobody slows down for nobody.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Allhouse. I see your three minutes is up, but thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay, second person is Nora Peterson. Nora, if you can give your name and how you're affiliated with the city and try to keep it to three minutes. Thank you. Is the light on? Okay, there you go.
How's that?
Perfect.
I'm Nora Peterson. I'm a resident here in Cedro Woolley and I was just reviewing the council packet before the meeting and I wanted to say I was really impressed with the community development grant. I saw that that PowerPoint presentation was put together by a summer intern and I thought that was really nice. It's really great to see, you know, the impact of just a few dollars on the community, not just in terms of economic impact. I'm sure we'll see increased tax revenues over the years because of those projects, but also the community impact in those nonprofit grants. It would be really great to see this type of program continue here in Cedro Woolley to help our nonprofits and small businesses over the years. And I think that'd allow us to kind of track the long-term impact of those small investments on our city's well-being and the, the economy of Cedro Woolley here in town. I also wanted to comment on the 1590 funds. I was looking at those applications on the city website and I was really struck with, you know, the enormous need in the city. So many people come to me and comment on how one of the things they really like about Cedro Woolley as opposed to Mount Vernon or Burlington is that they're not seeing as many homeless people. And one of the reasons for that is we have organizations like the YMCA and Family Promise doing that great work. So reviewing those packets, now I see that you guys have decided to postpone getting that money out and dispersing those funds. But looking at those applications, I saw that the need in the community really outstrips the resources that are available. And I wanted to suggest that, you know, it sounds like the need even further outstrips resources if we're accepting additional applications. And I'd like to see the council continue to work with those organizations even after this funding opportunity is closed, to make sure that those gaps are filled so that we can maintain the community and the resources that we have here. There we go, less than three minutes.
All right, thank you. Okay, there were no other ones on the list, so. Mr. Murray, do you have a comment tonight? All right, so moving on then, thank you. Moving on then, unfinished business? We do not have any unfinished business. New business, we have three items. The first is a stormwater management plan update. This is a first read. And I believe... Kelly, is this you?
No, this is me, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
My name's Kyle Anderson. I'm the Assistant City Engineer for the record here. We've been updating our stormwater management plan here that, as you all know, the last time it had been updated was 1997. Chapters 137, we previously discussed back in April here, just as a first read. No, no action on that. Tonight is the last chapter of this element to the comprehensive plan that discusses financial policies that they might recommend, 10-year rate outlook scenarios, et cetera, et cetera. But I have Karen Johnson with KLJ Financial Consulting, who is working with Gray and Osborne as well to present this package tonight. Karen, if you're on.
Thanks, Kyle. Yes, I am on. Can bring up the presentation. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here. Going to share the initial findings of the financial program for the stormwater master plan. Just kind of looking at the next slide, it's kind of walked through the topics that we'll cover. Really, my intent is to walk through some recommended financial policies that we would incorporate into the analysis, look at the 10-year rate outlook. We've started by looking at, you know, what your baseline operations would be prior to incorporating the new capital, just like, you know, what would, what kind of rate adjustments would need to be made over this 10-year period just to meet your ongoing operating and maintenance expenditures. That's essentially to give a baseline of what, you know, these rates could look like. And then we introduced the capital program that was developed as part of the stormwater master plan and have designed three scenarios for you to take a look at, of different ways that that might be funded and what the impacts would be on the customer bills resulting from that. Answer any questions or comments you might have and then kind of just discuss about next steps of where we go to finalize this final chapter of the stormwater master plan, which I know they're trying to get wrapped up. So just looking for comments or inputs there. So next slide. The first thing we look at is financial policies. This is really the framework for sound financial management that should be incorporated into all rate studies, is looking at what your financial performance metrics are to ensure that your rates are sufficient to allow you to achieve those goals. When you're looking at a utility, you want to maintain positive annual cash flow on an annual basis. The purpose of that is so you don't continually draw down on any reserves you have. And then when your reserves are depleted, it would require much larger rate increases. So the idea is to set rates to where, set rates to where they would maintain that annual cash flow. And then establish an operating reserve. With the utility already has this operating reserve. We planned it out at 30 days of annual operating and maintenance expenditures. The purpose for this type of a reserve is, is just to be sure that, you know, if you have any unexpected expenditures, revenues coming in a little lower than planned, things like that, you have enough surplus cash to be able to kind of weather those disruptions on a month-to-month, month-to-month basis over the course of a year. And then we also look at what kind of cash you should have on the capital side of things to be able to help fund your ongoing capital projects as well as have some reserves in case, you know, unplanned for projects come up to where you're able to, you know, help fund those projects without having spikes in, in rate increases to accomplish that. And then finally, a restricted debt reserve, which is something that's typically required by some bonds and some loan covenants. The stormwater utility does not currently have any debt, so there is no current restricted debt reserve. But that is just kind of something to keep in mind as new debt is issued. It's holding, holding out an annual payment aside to make sure that you're always able to meet your debt obligations on an annual basis. So that's, that's really looking at, you know, minimum cash reserve type policies. And then we look at policies on, you know, how you can fund your infrastructure by balancing, you know, rates with needs for debt and, you know, try to keep rates as low as possible while, while meeting your funding needs. One of the recommendations is that you would contribute annually from rate revenues, a contribution to the capital fund to help pay for capital projects. The suggestion here is to phase into a minimum of about $200,000 per year to help fund replacement projects. Often utilities will look at setting aside an amount equal to the depreciation expense. Because you have not funded something like this over time, that cost is about $800,000 per year, so that would be a pretty high step to climb. So we're not suggesting that for the near term. But this would be something, you know, you would look at on an annual, annual ongoing basis as you review your rate needs over time. Currently, this $200,000 is set equal to the average annual replacement projects that have been identified in the stormwater master plan that's currently in progress. And then by having that annual amount kind of help fund some of these projects and then your other projects like your upgrade, expansion type projects, we would need to look for alternative funding sources through like grants, issuing new debt, any capital reserves that have been built up. And, and one piece of this that should allow you to collect some additional revenues in order to, you know, reimburse for your utility investments is a general facilities charge for the storm. So currently, you know, the sewer utility has a general facilities charge in place. Stormwater does not. So as part of this engagement, we will be looking at establishing a new stormwater general facilities charge based on, you know, your current investments in the system and then these planned capital projects that have been identified in the study for the master plan. This has not been completed yet. We're probably, you know, a couple of months out on that, so we don't know what the result with that would be. But, you know, they would likely be in the range of somewhere, you know, maybe, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year generated from that source would be helpful to help build your reserves over time. Currently, the stormwater capital fund does not have any reserves on hand. And so, you know, we're basically starting with, you know, how do we fund these capital projects, essentially starting with no cash. And so, you know, it's kind of building up, when you build up that reserve, so over, you know, over time, it minimizes your needs for debt. So those are the types of projects, things we look at in terms of financial policies as the baseline for starting the analytical process of the financial plan. The next slide. This is just kind of an overview of how we look at this. As I mentioned, we're looking at this in two pieces. Baseline operations first and then looking at capital funding scenarios. So the baseline operations, this, this piece will show you what increases are necessary each year. Again, as I mentioned prior to incorporating the capital to pay the ongoing operating expenditures, to contribute to the operating reserves, to be sure that, you know, each year you're maintaining that 30-day reserve. And then again, adjusting debt service, which is there is none, but that would, you know, perhaps be a component that would need to be looked at in the future, given the capital funding scenarios will likely require the issuance of new debt. So that would be something to look at in the future. All three of the capital funding scenarios include the baseline operations. And so what we're looking at is, you know, really what the additional rate impacts are based on the, based on the different scenarios we're looking at. I would like to note one correction. I see that I missed something when I reorganized my scenarios. Scenario one is funding from grants, new debt, rates and cash reserves. Scenario two and three are actually reversed. So scenario three should say scenario two, my apologies. That is essentially the same capital funding scenario as scenario one, where we're looking at, you know, potential grants, new debt, rates and cash reserves. But rather than smoothing kind of the rate impacts over the years, this looks at, you know, looking, you know, finding an option for you to consider where you may do a lower first-year increase and then higher future year increases just to give you, you know, opportunities to, you know, come back and, you know, bet just how much of a rate increase is necessary. So that's that option. Scenario two up there, that's noted as scenario two, is scenario three. And that's where we're, are taking the more conservative approach assuming that you don't get any grants approved for the projects. And so it would be funding required from new debt and just whatever rates and cash reserves you have. So those are sort of the benchmarks to give an idea of what the rate projections might look like under those options. Next slide starts with first looking at what kind of assumptions are incorporated into the Starts with first looking at what kind of assumptions are incorporated into the analysis to forecast the operating revenues and expenditures. First, we look at, you know, what is the revenue that's generated with the Stormwater Utility under current rates? And then we apply estimated customer growth over the 10-year period, which adds the incremental revenue each year. We're assuming 8.3% annual growth rate, and that's based on looking back at about a three-year historical trend and estimating, you know, what things might look like in the future, assuming about that same level of annual customer growth. That results in about 34 new connections per year, which equates to about 16 new equivalent residential units per year. For the Stormwater Utility, your equivalent residential units are based on a 10,000 square foot lot. And so, you know, whatever the total lot size is, is divided by the 10,000, the 10,000 square feet. And that results in the number of ERUs. So, that is our projection for revenues under existing rates over the 10-year plan. Then we look at things like when you accumulate cash balances, you can earn interest on that money. We look out and what might that interest earnings rate be based on over this 10-year period? Look at the local government investment pool, provides historical data to where you can kind of get an idea of where the interest earnings have been over time. Took a look at a three-year period where the average interest earnings rate was about 4.7%. Five-year period, it was about 2.9%. The 10-year period, it's about 2.1%. So, we kind of use those as a gauge as to, you know, where, where those may land in the future. So, for the forecast, we used 4%, so a little bit higher for the first two years, 2025 and 2026. From 2027 to 2030, puts us through, you know, the, the six-year period. We brought it back down to a five-year average, which has been about 3%. And then we dropped it back down to the 10-year average of 2% per year for the last few years of the study period. Trying to get a balance of, of what that might look like. Next, we look at your line item detail of your budgets on what your operating and maintenance expenditures are and how those might increase over time due to inflation. We look at the inflation factors from the Consumer Price Index from the Seattle, Tacoma, Bellevue area, which I believe is a consistent benchmark with what you use for evaluating potential rate increases in both Stormwater and Sewer. Getting looking back at that, the three-year history has been about 5.8% per year. For five years, 4.9% per year, and 10 years, 3.7%. For our forecast, we assumed using the 5% kind of landing in between that three-year, five-year up through 2030, and then dropping it back down to more of the 10-year level of 4% per year. So, that's kind of our underlying assumptions that are used to build the profile of what the total cost for the utility would look like over this 10-year periods. The next slide, we look at the results for the baseline operation. We're looking at what it would take to just, you know, keep up with your annual expenditures for operations. The graphic on the right, the, the bars, that represents sort of the increasing costs over time for your operating expenditures and contributions to operating reserves. That's the red bar, and it's a very small dollar amount, so it doesn't really show up on the chart. And then the dotted line, that shows you this is where your revenue under your current rates with assumed customer growth would be in comparison to your expenditures that are forecasted over the period. So, as you can see for 2025, your project, your current revenues are sufficient to pay those expenditures. And then as time increases with inflation factors and so forth, you can see that that gap continues to increase over time. And so, what we're looking at, what type of an increase would be needed to, to close that gap? The result is, is that would be about, if you smooth that over the study period starting in 2026 through 2034, that would be about a 3.15% per year rate increase to the Stormwater Utility. That's pretty consistent with some of your historical increase. Like in 2025, your rates increased by 3.13%. So, it's very comparable to historical. With this rate increase profile, it would recover the projected operating expenditures over the 10-year period. It would provide the contributions to maintain the 30-day reserve target. And then it also provides a little bit of additional cash of about $30,000 per year towards capital. And that's essentially the result of smoothing the 3.15% per year generates a little bit of additional cash. So, this is the result of the baseline operations as the starting point, or essentially the floor of what the rate increases would be. And then we look at the capital funding scenarios to see what additional needs would be required in order to fund that capital program. Next slide. This shows the identified projects in the Stormwater Management Plan for the 10-year period that we're looking at, 2025 through 2034. The plan focuses, and I want a six-year capital improvement program, so kind of identifying what those projects are for the six-year program. And the financial plan looks at the next four years as well to give you a picture of what things might look like for a 10-year period. You can see the, we've got some projects highlighted there. These are the projects that have been identified that could potentially be eligible for grant funding, you know, based on discussions with Kyle and GNO of, you know, which projects could, could get some funding. And so, that's essentially the FNS Grade Road Clay Pipe Project, the Brickyard Fish Passage Covert Water Quality Pond, and Jones Road Retrofit, thinking it's, you know, has a possibility of getting some grant funding. Much of the grant funding assumes the need for, you know, some funding matches. So, we're also planning for, if you did get grants for these projects, it would require about a 15% to 20% local match as well. So, that is incorporated into the analysis. So, this is looking at the CIP projects in current day dollars. It's a total over the 10-year period of about $6.5 million. And then to determine what your true cash needs are to fund this, we, we escalate these costs over time to adjust for, you know, projects that are identified now based on 2025 will cost more in 2034 when it's actually time to design and build those projects. So, the next slide shows this annual projection of the capital program in escalated dollars. This is kind of giving you an idea of, you know, how it looks from year to year from a, from a graphical perspective. Incorporating the $6.5 million current day dollars and then adding 3% per year construction cost escalation brings the total funding need over the 10-year period to $7.8 million. And that represents, is by that solid line indicates, that's the average annual spending of about $778,000. But as you can see, you know, there are some, you know, there are some pretty large projects in there that are, you know, well above the average. And since we're at a starting point now, there are, there are no cash reserves in the construction fund currently available for these projects. It's about, you know, how fast and how quickly can we generate money? What grants would be available to fund that and so forth? And so, how much debt and rate increases would have to be incurred in order to manage the execution of this capital project? So, just of note, there's a couple of, you know, high, the high, the high bar projects. The projects that are identified as grant funding, it's a pretty small project in 2038 has grant funding. And then it's that 2029 project, that first large project. That's one of the ones, the Brickyard, it's assumed to be grant funded. And then the last two years of the projects. So, they're assumed to be grant funded under scenario one. And so, it would be, you know, great if you can get those grants. That would certainly help because absent grants, there, you know, this would be primarily debt financed and use of rate increases for cash reserves. So, we'll kind of look at, you know, what those results mean in terms of our scenarios. The next slide. Start with just a summary of what the actual impact would be to your residential monthly bills under each one of these scenarios to get an idea of, you know, what the differences are between the scenarios. So, currently, your monthly Stormwater rate is $13.49, which is in this first left, left 10 column. You have a utility tax that's applied to the bill, which is a 10 and a half, 10 and a half percent utility tax. So, the total bill to a customer right now for Stormwater, and this is a, looking at a residential customer bill, is $14.91. Scenario one, which is essentially would be considered kind of your best-case scenario is if you bought that grant funding that we identified, if you had about 7.5% increases per year over these, this five-year period. So, we've kind of focused it on what the increases would be in the first five years and then dropping the increases back down to inflationary levels, which remain the same for all scenarios. So, in terms of comparing the three scenarios, it's really a focus on this first five years. So, 7.5% increases and then 4% increases. It's about an average annual increase of 5.9%. With the Stormwater Utility rate being, you know, relatively low at $14.91, those percentage increases would impact the monthly bills, but just over about a dollar or so per month each year, they would increase by that. And then a little bit lower in the later years. So, looking at that from an average annual impact, it's about a $1.13% per month, per year increase to the current bill. Looking at scenario two, where we're still assuming grant funding, but rather than having a 7.5% increase in 2026, wanted to take a look at, you know, how low could you go in this first year with having a little bit higher rate increases in future years and still accomplish relatively the same objectives? So, that's the intent of this scenario. And so, that would give you, you know, a slightly lower impact in the first year, higher impacts in the later years. And so, it's a 6.2% average annual increase compared to the 5.9%. Looking at that from a dollar bill impact, it's a 5% per month difference per year between scenario one and two. Scenario three is more of the kind of worst-case scenario of not receiving any grant funding. And that would, you know, bump those increases up to about 9% per year in that first five years for average annual increase of about 6.8%. And the average annual monthly yearly impact was $1.32. So, just, just kind of to reiterate, the difference between scenario one and two is 5 cents per month, per year. The difference between two and three is 14 cents per month, per year. And then the difference between scenario one and scenario three is 19 cents per month. So, the fortunate thing with, you know, you know, the percentage increases may sound a little bit high, but from a dollar impact standpoint, there, there's not that much variability in, in, in what these results show. So, this is looking at what, what is the monthly bill impact? And then the next slide is looking at, take a look at each individual scenario and just provide a little bit of snapshot of, of what that looks like. So, scenario one, again, this is the grants, debts, rates, reserves, about 7.5% per year, that first five years. That first graphic on the top left, that is the capital program in escalated dollars. The purple bars are denoting which projects are assumed to be grant funded. The green bar is a debt finance project. And then the other bars are cash funded. And that results in the capital funding strategy. High chart shown on the right, which is, under this scenario, it would be about, you know, an assumption of about 57% grants, 23% coming from rates and cash reserves, and then 20% coming from new debt issuance. The left bottom chart, again, that just shows the bars building up to what the total expenditures are. So, that bottom bar is operating and maintenance expenditures. And then it kind of builds up to, you know, sort of that darkest charcoal bar is contributions to capital. And then the green bar is the impact of adding in new debt service. And so, you can just kind of see what, what the gap is and, you know, and that 7.5% per year for five years and 4% is what would close that gap that's demonstrated in that bar chart. The bottom right graphic, this is looking at what your ending balance would be and compared to what the target is. First section of that graphic, that's the operating reserve. And, you know, that is set to be not each year for the baseline analysis. And then that second set is, this is achieving that target of about 1% of your assets to be set to maintain a reserve to help build that. And this would be a minimum reserve. It's, it's always best to have higher reserves because, you know, outside of this 10-year period, again, you're going to continue having capital projects and you want to build reserves to be able to fund a higher portion of those with cash as opposed to continually issuing new debt. So, under this scenario, by the end of the study period, you're about, at about 70% of that target, which is okay. You know, it's, it's, you, you're building this, there's, you know, it'd be ideal to reach it at 100%, but this is, you know, certainly acceptable as a starting point. So, I think this is a, a viable scenario, even though it doesn't meet that target. The Stormwater Utility also contributes to your equipment repair and replacement fund, which funds more of your equipment type of stuff that's held in that separate fund. There's about 200 or so thousand in there currently for the Stormwater portion of that fund. So, that is a kind of a snapshot of scenario one. The next slide looks at scenario two, which essentially the top left bar and the bright bar, all the bars really except for the, the bottom two are the same as, as under scenario one. The difference here is what the profile would look like. If rather than doing, you know, 7.5% per year increases for that first five-year focus, you get 5.5%. And again, this is inclusive of the 3.5% for baseline. I just want to clarify that it's not 3.5% for operations and 5.5% for capital for, for a total. This, this profile incorporates the baseline operations as well. Under this profile, you would reach 100% of the target over time. And that's simply due to smoothing the rate increases. So, you know, the 5.5 is going to set at the minimum of what would be needed to, to cover things in that first year. The 8.5 is smoothed and, you know, the real number is probably something more like 8.43% per year or so. And so, that, that would get you at 100% of target. I just rounded everything to the nearest 0.5. So, you know, that's why that achieves a little bit more than 100% of the target. So, again, a viable strategy, assuming that this grant assumption is, is reasonable. Last, next slide is same information for scenario three. Again, there is no grant funding assumed in this scenario, so significantly more debt being issued. So, again, the green bars are the debt. Sort of the teal bars is cash. And then that last bar that's gold, that's a project where it's assumed that that would be about 50% cash funded and 50%. cash funded and fifty percent debt financed. And so, you know, under this scenario where you don't get any grants, you're looking at a pretty, a pretty large percentage of that capital program needing to be funded by debt, which increases what your annual debt service payments would be over time. The profile of nine and a half percent increases followed by four would also is set to achieve that, your reserve targets. And there, so those are kind of snapshots. And then I have a, just a final slide, which is the next slide, that just kind of pulls some additional information together to summarize these three options between scenario one, two, and three. Again, your monthly rate at year ten, after all the increases are put in place, range from twenty-two sixty-six for scenario one to twenty-four twenty-eight for scenario three, with the total bill, which incorporates the utility tax, would be twenty-five oh four, going to twenty-six eighty-three. And that's in comparison to your current bill of thirteen forty-nine. Again, the average annual monthly bill increase ranges from a dollar thirteen per month, a dollar eighteen per month, to a dollar thirty-two per month. And then the total bill, including the utility tax, starting from where your current rate is, is about a ten to eleven or so dollar per month bill impact. What that looks like in terms of how the capital projects are funded under scenario one, it's about four point five million dollars from grants, one point five from debt, and one point eight from cash reserves. That funds that total ten-year CIP of seven point eight million dollars. The required debt of issuing one point five million dollars in debt results in annual debt service payments of about ninety-four thousand per year. Then that profile applies to both scenario one and two, because they both assume the same capital lending assumptions. And then scenario three, where there's no debt, I mean, sorry, no, no grants, that pushes that debt issuance up to about six million dollars, funding seventy-seven percent of the program. That would increase your annual debt service to about three hundred and sixty-five thousand per year. The last chart, everything is fairly comparable there on achievement of the capital reserve balance, achieving it somewhere between seventy-seven percent and a hundred and eight percent. Excuse me, and then the annual rate, rate funded capital is pretty similar between the three utilities. So some of the key considerations on, you know, how do, what do you choose between these three scenarios, or think about, you know, how else we might approach this, is looking at, you know, kind of the first question is, you know, how feasible is the assumed level of grant funding? If you don't get that grant funding, you know, that's not approved, some of these projects be delayed. What's the tolerance for higher rate increases that are presented here? Well, maybe there's an option with higher rate increases that generates more cash and reduces that assumed, you know, six million dollars new issuance of debt? And then also, you know, how much revenue over time might be collected from this new stormwater connection charge? Which I would be guessing would probably be, you know, somewhere between, over this ten-year period, and again, this is just a, this, I guess, we are not close enough to have a final answer, but, you know, it could, it could fairly easily generate somewhere between five hundred thousand and a million dollars over a ten-year period and help buy down some debt, or help build your balance to help fund future capital projects. So the final slide is just the wrap-up of kind of what we're looking for today. If there's any questions I could answer, any comments on scenarios, what we're looking to do is finalize the financial plan piece of the Stormwater Master Plan chapter. These are not proposals being brought forth for adoption. That'll occur, you know, you saw, we'll have your opportunities in October and November to, you know, believe that what you want to bring forth for ready, rate increases. And at that point, you would have the jump facilities charge prepared and looking for consideration for adopting that. So today's just kind of this first look at where we're at, and then August twenty-seventh, council meeting is sort of spotted to where, if there are any suggested changes or comments that we could present an updated financial plan, kind of bring the pieces together of the different chapters of the Stormwater Management Plan together and finalize that. And then, of course, you would have, you know, the opportunity through, before adoption to further consider what you want to do in terms of rating places. So that wraps up my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any thoughts or...
Go ahead, Councilwoman Lavaca.
Thank you, and, and thank you for putting this all together. It's quite a lot of information, for sure. One thing I would propose is, in the next read, to have a ten-year chart of what we have done, what our rates were, the trend line of those going up, and then past projects to see how we, how we covered those or what projects we had done over the last ten years. I remember I worked with Dave on, he was our stormwater engineer, but Mark kind of headed that up, and John did the comprehensive plan, so they must have had something, some legacy data that I don't see represented in here for, for what our stormwater situation was over the last ten years. The other thing is that it's, it's difficult on rate increases, as you know. I'm sure that, that's pretty well-known. We just did a nine billion dollar tax increase for state and another three billion for local and county, so that was the largest tax increase in Washington State history. So looking at a ten-year outlook might be easier, but the five-year outlook is probably more realistic, and so it is a seven point five to nine percent increase over that time in this one category, not to mention waste management or PSC, which we don't have any control of. The police station will need another station at some point. That's going to be thirty, thirty million bucks, probably at least, that we've got to look at as a realistic thing. So looking at an additional seven point eight, which we didn't really see or foresee or even have in the line of sight, is challenging. We've got to fund an RSO, School Resource Officer, SRO. We really need that in the school, as I was opening up with earlier in my initial comments. The parents would feel a lot better about having that in there, so we need to get that guy in the schools. Those are just areas of funding that we, we need to make sure we have. So it is challenging to be asking for more money from the community, and this is stormwater. It's only a dollar, but like, the waste facility fees for yard debris goes up, everything goes up, and people are noticing it for sure, even the dollars, because they're all adding them. But thank you so much.
Okay. Councilwoman Cuck?
I'm fairly new to the stormwater here in town. The details, we saw residential, or there are also separate stormwater fee schedules for industrial, commercial, others?
They are applied the same fee per, this is a, a fee per ERU. So for example, right now, your current bill is, say, thirty-four ninety-four, thirteen, sorry, thirteen ninety, thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Your commercial and, because they would pay that rate for, for every ten thousand square foot lot they have.
Okay. All right, that, that explains that. And with the growth in the city, is there a chance for the new connections to make up a little bit of, of the rate increases that we all hate to see?
That is incorporated into the analysis, is the assumption that there will be some additional revenue from rates, so that is built into the analysis.
One last question with, if, if borrowing rates, for example, are very low at the state loan thing, would that, I know you don't want to go into debt, and you have to pay it off with interest, but if the interest is really low, wouldn't that be a, one way to tackle the, the capital reserve, which I think we desperately need?
So what, 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 what all of these scenarios do is they try to accomplish both those things, so everything is kind of incorporated. So the debt assumptions in, in this analysis do assume that you're getting low-interest loans. And so that's part of the revenue requirement, and then that, that the rate increases are, are, are at the same time trying to build up the, these reserves to that minimum of one percent of your capital.
So scenario one...
Definitely ideal, I mean, it is nice. You know, it's much easier to issue debt when interest rates are low as opposed to when they're high. I, I would guess what I would say here, the different situation here for stormwater is, you know, often when we're doing these kind of studies, there is already some cash available in capital to go, go towards the funding, and, and in this case, we're kind of starting from zero, so it's, it's, it's a bit of a harder hill to climb than if there were already cash reserves in the bank. And so, you know, that is essentially the reason for the recommendation that, you know, you need the rates to, you know, not just fund the, the immediate need, but to build some reserves, so over time you aren't continuing to have to, you know, debt finance for all of your capital projects.
I got it. Thank you for your good work on this.
So I cannot see if your hand is up. Councilwoman Henderson, do you have a question?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I just add one more on LIDs, Lids. We are incorporating those a lot more with our new builds and new construction, of course. So I, I think I talked about this before, and I got an answer, but it's not recalling it, Charlie, but impact fees for low-impact development zones for mitigating stormwater. Are we, so a complex goes in, or development goes in, a number of houses, they all got to have their, their lid, low-impact development for their stormwater, they're not even utilizing our, our stormwater system.
Well, not quite. So that is something that, as we get into our stormwater rates, that somebody who incorporates LID practices to mitigate their runoff off of the individual piece of land they have, may give them a particular discount on, for instance, the, I always want to call it GFF, but basically their general facility fee to buy into the system. But you got to remember that part of these rates pay for the citywide stormwater as well, both on our arterials and roads, and I often explain this to different folks as well. So it's more than just what's coming off their property, it's also paying for the stormwater that allows us to, I guess I'll say, mitigate flooding and different stormwater impacts throughout the city as well. So there, it's, it's more than just paying for the stormwater, they contribute to the system, it's also funding our entire utility.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. On a percentage of the low-impact development, because we, in our municipal code, I know that we added that in as the primary source of stormwater mitigation when you do new construction, if you can, and it's becoming more and more applicable to zones. Is it significant enough as we see more construction that it would impact the dollar figure that we're looking at as projected cost?
I will say right now, that's a complicated answer, because a lot of that depends on, you know, you just don't do LID practices anywhere. It depends, for instance, on how permeable the soil is, is it clay or is it gravel? So clays, you're not going to be able to engage in much low-impact development because it's not going to go anywhere. Those are, are concepts that we, we need to fold in and be more sophisticated with our fee strategy for this. Mostly what they are, too close to the mic, mostly they really are part of the Department of Ecology Stormwater requirements that have increasingly, and rightly so, encouraged the LID portion way of mitigating stormwater. But at this point in time, our rate structure isn't sophisticated enough, and that's one of the goals moving on in the future here, to incorporate or to recognize a lesser direct impact to the system, and therefore that deserves some recognition in the fee structure. But right now, especially with only a dollar a month, that type of thing, you don't have a lot of order of magnitude spread, but, but that's something that we plan on building into it as we get more sophisticated. But right now, it's a simpler fee structure than that.
Okay, no, that sounds good. I know that it's a dollar right now, but it'll be six fifty within five years, twenty dollars per household for stormwater. I get asked that a lot, like, "Stormwater, why am I paying?" And I'm like, "Well, got to break it down, the MPDSs and what we do with the stormwater, and how we got to look for all those forever chemicals and, and everything else." But, yeah, I appreciate that answer.
So as example of a system-wide contribution that we'll be making to this, everybody is familiar with the railroad trestle on Highway twenty, oftentimes floods about two-thirds the width of the road because it doesn't have the capacity to handle high rain flows. That is going to, in, in our stormwater utility, is contributing to a portion of the Jones-John Liner Undercrossing Project, and that project, we intend to fix that problem, because for the first time, we'll be able to direct that stormwater flow for both the John Liner Arterio Project between the Roundabout and Reed Street, and then the Jones-John Liner Railroad Undercrossing Project goes from Reed Street to Sap Road. That stormwater will be able to get, there'll be a certain amount of that stormwater that floods SR twenty, redirected under the undercrossing and dumped, and discharged into Brickyard Creek. So as an example of an overarching benefit to city residents and, and just traveling public in general, that's kind of what we're doing to build into some of these big projects to, to do an overall benefit to the community as well as to each individual property.
All right, that's good to know, thank you. All right, we have no further questions, it appears, so Karen, thank you very much for your presentation, for the information, answering questions. And Kyle, I want to redirect it back to you, is there anything that you would like to add here?
No, I'd just like to thank Grayan Osborne and KLJ Financial Consulting for all the hard work they put on, on this. We didn't want to surprise the team with anything, that's why we're starting off with a soft read right now. Scenarios, suggestions, you know, we understand that there may be a fourth or even fifth option as we weigh this out. We've got a little bit of time to think about it here, again, no action with that, obviously. So hoping that we've informed you as best we can with where we're going with this, and we'll come to a conclusion later. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it forward. Okay, moving it on to item number two hundred, new business. This is a comprehensive plan capital facilities element. This is a review, no action is requested for tonight. Are you going to be covering this for us, Nicole?
I'll just be doing a brief introduction.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Okay, good evening, Council. Tonight we have Donna Keeler joining us online from Facet Northwest. She'll be presenting the preliminary draft updates to the Parks and Recreation and the Capital Facilities elements of the Comprehensive Plan. These two drafts have gone through an initial review with the Planning Commission. I'll mention that staff have not yet had the time to go through it with a fine tooth comb, so it'd be really appreciated. Your feedback tonight will help kind of guide us in the right direction as we get this final draft of the complete plan to you guys by the joint meeting on the, what is it, August nineteenth, with the Planning Commission. So Donna's going to be walking us through a PowerPoint presentation, provide an overview of the changes. Bill and I are also available for any questions if there's technical stuff as needed. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Donna.
All right, thank you, Nicole. Welcome, Donna.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for having me. Thanks, Nicole, for the introduction. As Nicole mentioned, this is just a first touch, it's a rough draft of these two elements, and we're, I'm beginning to see the light at the end of the tunnel. We've got only one more element after this, the utilities element, and, and then we'll start pulling them all together. But we wanted you to just take a look and see what direction we're heading in terms of goals and policies, and get any input that, or thoughts or concerns that you might have. Thomas, if you can take me on to the next slide? Thank you. So like I mentioned, we have the Parks and Recreation element, we'll be going over draft goals and policies that you got a copy of, and recommendations, and the same with the Capital Facilities element. I wanted to mention that for the Parks and Recreation element, we brought on a Parks and, kind of a finance expert, Annie Seager of Seager Consultants, to help us review this document, and she provided some really good recommendations for it. And with the Capital Facilities element, and basically what it is, it's a accumulation of all these mini plans, like the stormwater plan, we'll go into it, and solid waste, water, even though we don't... even though we don't do water, we have to make sure we have addressed all of the capital facilities that the town uses, and plan ahead for projected growth. Next, so starting with the Parks and Recreation Element, it's listed as a required element under the Growth Management Act, and implements, and is consistent with the Capital Facilities Plan as it relates to park and recreation facilities. Next. So what, what do we have in that plan? We include an estimate of Parks and Recreation demand for at least a 10-year period, and we include an evaluation of facility needs over that time. We also required to include an evaluation of tree canopy, canopy coverage, and that's something that I haven't really talked to staff about, so we'll have to figure out an approach for that, and evaluation of intergovernment coordination opportunities to provide regional approaches for meeting park and recreation demand in the city and the area. Next. So some of the key recommendations or changes to note that we've introduced, we were, we're going to keep our, the 2016 vision statement from the previous plan in this chapter. The introductory narrative is pretty long in the current version, so we're going to condense that and update it to correspond with the Park Recreation and Open Space Plan that Nathan has been working on, and hasn't been finished, and we have some recommendations on how to move forward with that, and incorporating into the appendix. And so, other, just a few goals and policies to note, we added some policies focusing on partnerships with the school districts, Gadget County, and others, on maintenance, building new facilities, and just sharing of facilities for, providing more of these spaces for the community. We added a policy and establish a network of bicycle and pedestrian trails in coordination with the county, and policies on assessing level of service and ensuring futureable build, the future buildable lands analysis includes a geographic analysis that identifies open space and recreation areas. And we bolstered goal P1 to make it more clear, and added additional supporting policies. Next. We revised goal P2, developing and acquiring parkland, and added a number of new policies to bolster that goal, added new associated policies with goal P4, revised goal P5 to further emphasize the importance of the city's heritage and culture and history, and added a policy to consider adding staff in five to 10 years dedicated to a Parks Programming Department for coordinating and managing, managing uses of city-owned facilities and overseeing project development. The staff could also be in charge of applying for grants and managing projects. Next goal? I mean, sorry, next slide? So, that, just a quick rundown of the Parks Plan, and then the Capital Facilities Element, like I mentioned, just brings together all these little, many other plans that we have into one coordinated document. It's also a requirement under the Growth Management Act, and it's critical in the process of designating or expanding urban growth areas, if you ever do in the future. We won't need to do that this time. It includes an inventory and locations of facilities owned by public entities, including entities that are outside of the city. For example, the library is no longer owned by the city, but we are including it. A forecast of the future needs of such capital facilities, a proposed locations and capacities of expanded or new capital facilities to accommodate future growth, and we're also required to include a six-year financing plan for those. So just a quick look at, you know, some of the city-owned facilities include your sewer sanitary facilities, fire, police, solid waste, stormwater, which I was, I didn't add here, and the non-city-owned, our example of libraries, school district, and water service also is provided by the PUD. We'll have, include goals and policies for each of the above, and the appendix section of the plan will have the supporting documentation. I'm still working with staff on these, both of these elements, like I mentioned before, and the financing plan is always a bit tricky, because you have financing plan for each little part of it, and we need to just kind of bring it all together to show that there is capacity to finance any new capital facilities expanding for all of them over the next six-year period. And I think that concludes my presentation. I didn't want to go over all the policies in the Capital Facilities Element, there are a lot, just wanted to see if you had any questions or concerns. This will be coming back to you in a more final version in August, and I want to just also thank all your, the staff, of fire and police chiefs, and everyone else has been really helpful in helping me and the other Facet members put the, put this together, and it'll be, it's a work in progress, until we get it finally adopted.
All right, thank you, Donna.
Any questions?
Yes, we do. We have a question by Councilwoman Casti.
Thank you, Donna, for working on this. I just had a couple of questions. One, and maybe I missed something, but I was just curious if there was going to be opportunity for Council or the community input. I know myself, I've discussed possible selling of a couple of the properties that we have, and I didn't know when we would be able to discuss that, or be able to, within this, you know, long plan here, it would be something that could be added and potentially bring in not much revenue, but a bit, and then offload some of the responsibility. I was just curious about that.
Oh, yeah, that's a really good question, and this is a time to bring that up. There will be other opportunities. Our goal is to have all the different elements pulled together into one cohesive document by your meeting on August 19th, and that will technically be your first initial public draft of the document, but it, but we're seeking input on policy language now, so if this is something that the Council would like to see added as a policy to do a study or review existing properties for potential sale, we can definitely add that.
I would just like to see it as an, a discussion that the Council looks over, or one of the committees, or somebody to be able to say, you know, "This isn't really working for us. It's stuck in the back of someone else's property, you can't get to it, it doesn't make sense," or, you know, "It's on the side of the road, it's, it's dangerous to get in and out of," the different things like that. So if it, the verbiage could be there, that we can look at those things and discuss, that would be lovely.
Okay, thank you.
I could certainly add that.
Councilman Cox?
Yes, thank you for your good work on this. In terms of major capital projects, just an observation, I think the, a new police station is going to be critically needed before too long, and also a revamped sewage treatment plant. And I was reading, I don't know if it was this, but it was talking about somewhere, maybe it was in, in stormwater, about flooding, and its location of the sewage treatment plant, its proximity to the river, made me a little concerned about the potential flooding risk and how that could impact our whole community, not only the people who live along the river, but the sewage tree, operation of the sewage treatment plant. That was just an observation. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, and thank you, Donna, for putting that together. I know those are, those are challenging ones. I did notice that in the Parks Plan, there was a call-out, and I'm not finding it quite yet, but for 168 acre, additional acres in order to accommodate the growth. Is that correct? I think it was 168 acres, right?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me either, but I believe that's what Annie, our consultant, came up with.
Okay.
Based on our projection.
And on that plan, I didn't quite see a location, or proposed locations, for acquiring that, that land for green space and parks?
Yeah, that's a really good question, you know, it, it's tied with level of service, and so, for example, if we have a level of service standard where everyone is within walking distance or quarter-mile of a playground, we would have to ensure that any expansion would meet those level of service standards, so that not once, you know, one side of the city gets more open space than the other side. So that would need to be looked at a little more carefully. I don't know. Bill, do you have any other thoughts on that?
And, don't quote me on this exactly, but I believe the thing is not an additional 168 acres, it's, so right now, we have about, I think, 133 acres of current open space, city-owned open space and parks and lands. It doesn't include the additional privately-owned stuff, like, say, for instance, a little park and an HOA and that type of stuff, which would add up. But I believe that's 168 acres total, so we would be increasing maybe another 30 acres to meet that level of service demand. It's, I think, roughly an acre every 1,000 people in population, which would equal 133, so right now, we actually meet that theoretical level of service. And that's what just, I mean, this town owns a lot of parks and open spaces and stuff, that's why, I mean, we're rather blessed with that. But this is, when we go to 16, 17,000 in population projected to go in, I think, the next 10 years or 15 years, then we'd need to get to that 160 to be able to maintain what we currently enjoy per, per capita in population.
Okay, yeah, I think...
Another 160 acres of land would be a really hard...
Yeah, well, that's why it caught my eye. I do remember the 1,000 homes per, I think it was five acres or something like that additional, or maybe it was one, not homes, but people.
There's different theories, but I believe we're focusing on, on one acre per thousand people.
One acre, okay. The other part was that the, the plan that you, that's written up, there's a lot of yellow in there. I don't know if anybody else had any trouble reading that? That was very, very, very difficult to, and bad on the eyes. I'll have to do a little L&amp;I claim after we're done, because my, no, I'm kidding. But, yeah, if we can get that into a darker font, readable font, in order for simulation while we're perusing it, it's 200 pages we got to read within like four days, so anything like that would really help. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Donna, thank you very much for the presentation. If there's anything else? Nicole, you wanted to add to this?
Nothing to add, just thank you for the feedback. We'll get a final draft shortly to you.
All right, thank you. So, moving on to our last item under new business tonight, and that is the Comprehensive Plan Parks and Rec Element, and so again, Nicole?
We just went over that, too.
Okay.
Unless there's anything else Council wants to discuss on Parks and Rec.
No, no, they, they had it in there, that's why I went ahead and brought it up.
All right. All right, given that, then, we have completed our agenda, and the next meeting is going to be, actually, both the council meeting and the strategic planning meeting's going to be August 13th, so at least a couple weeks away. Strategic Plan at 5, council meeting at 6. I hope everybody has a great night, and with that, we are adjourned.